I'm hot. I run a little hot, you know. I'm always warm. Be like February and snowing and I'm warm. It's supposed to go off after four or six hours. One of these days, I want to get them to put a kill switch back here that we can just press a button and it'll turn off. Huh? Yeah, me too.
Guys, you guys were.
Cold was 10 degrees ago. Sorry.
You won't think that when we go into the back. You'll be like, "It's hot back here." Hey, John? Can you give me a minute? Don't worry about it.
Oh, Corinne, did Kirk get ahold of you?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of Marshville Borough Council, August 20th, 2018. Bill, please rise for a moment of silence and our Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Virginia, if we could have a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Thank you. Just to let everyone know, tonight, there won't be any presentation. Yarley Makefield EMS withdrew, so that'll be removed from tonight. We'll move right into public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes, please. First one would be Kathy Pansita. Please step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
It's like, go shorty. Catherine Pansita, Hillcrest Avenue, Marshville, PA. Reviewing your little agenda for night, 9F, could you elaborate exactly what this project is and what it means? It didn't seem to cover that too much during your agenda.
What did you say that was? I couldn't hear you.
9F.
9F?
Yeah. I'm not going to use my three minutes.
Sure.
9F is the grant.
Well, wait, answer after my three minutes if you're going to clock it against me. So, you chill. And concerning 9L, as everybody says, and I'll probably go on record because I made sure I covered myself, as everybody probably knows from my financial disclosure statements, as a former councilperson, I am employed by Capital Health. And I'm also employed in the finance department. And I did make sure that I knew nothing about that from a professional end of my job. And thank God, I was on vacation all last week, too, before it hit. So, we're just going to put a disclaimer that anything I say in relationship to Capital Health and your possible relationship is my own private feelings, not as an employee, but as a resident of the borough. I think it's very important that, just from a person that knows about it, to have EMS service. And number one, I think that your coverage has to go on. It's really sad that I saw that you had, like, possibly three presentations on there. I knew when I looked at it, just running the numbers, 200,000 even, to guarantee you for one year's, not going to cut it. You have the best deal on the thing, there's no doubt about it. I was not happy on social media when I saw some council people stating opinion of how they didn't like certain things. You know, I really thought as a councilperson, until you take a vote, if you're really true to that seat, you don't make an opinion because you don't know who is going to stand before this mic and share something you don't know. Now, if you think you know everything before you come, keep on doing it. We are watching what people say and what people do. So, you should really just be mindful of that. You're probably getting the best deal there. You're getting 24-hour coverage, something you didn't have. And like Mr. Buzan said, he runs a great ship. I've used them before. So, good luck, cover it. And cover it mostly for your police department. Nine out of 10 times, you got a bad situation going down and a gun, I would hate to see one of your officers need something and not have the right services available. That's how important, I think, that you should have 24/7 all-time coverage. If that's not back behind you, that's what you should think constantly. Also, during your agenda presentation, you did this little thing about your MMA relationship. That's a little funky agreement between the borough. And thank God, we don't have a borough manager and a director of the MMA that sit in the same seat. All those analysis, there were previous analysis. And some of those analysis go back to, it was a cash flow issue. If you get money from the MMA, you really have to think the borough didn't have to take out money from tax anticipation notes and loans. Prior to that, on cash flow, if you sent out a sanitation bill and it was due in the first month of January, that's probably another, I wouldn't say I'm not on council, I would probably guess your sanitation bill is sent at least 950,000. So, we don't have to ooh and ah on how much police cost in a budget, just think how much the bill is for you to collect the garbage in this town. Put that in relationship and file that with your 91%. That relationship also stopped also. So, the biggest thing was, I was a little disappointed in that analysis because nobody wants to talk about the elephant in the room. When you come to the MMA contract and sharing employees, I'll talk about it. It is the pension funding for the shared borough employees, both past, current, and future. So, when you do an analysis, and if you really want to do it the right way, please make sure that you include the pension funding. Okay? And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Jane Berger. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue, here in Marshville. Good evening, everyone. First, it's a good thing that the borough's emergency operation plan is finally being reviewed and updated. Hopefully, all council members do have a copy of the original plan that is now in use. It really was supposed to have been given to everybody, so if you don't, before you do any review of proposed changes, you might want to get a gander at what's already in place. I was wondering, because I don't know, to make the review easier, if you provided a summary of the proposed changes. You know, you've got, you know, what page it's on, what's the original wording, what's proposed change, and then what the rationale is for it. It will certainly make your review much easier, even if you had both copies to go side by side, page by page. And I look forward to hearing your discussions on that, hopefully, at next month's amended agendas meeting. I was on council when the plan was adopted, as were some colleagues here in the room, and worked with the Emergency Management Coordinator to, you know, prepare it, as well as forms and other information that went along with it. So, if you're looking for a historical perspective or some information about why things are as they were, I'll be at the agenda meeting, and please feel free to call on me if you have any questions. This evening, you are to vote and select an emergency services provider, or ambulance service, to serve the borough. And I'm confident that you will vote for the proposal that can best serve our borough. As a resident, there are a minimum of two essentials before all else. For me, it's a short response time achieved by utilizing the existing building, and second, qualified, experienced, and certified staff. After this is the need for 24/7 coverage, certainly the choice of a hospital and backup, whether by mutual aid or by the provider. I understand that council did receive three proposals, and two were presented, and one of the three has decided not to move forward. One is a part of, I would call, smaller community-based organization, and the other's part of a large hospital network. For me, the ownership does not matter. It's that we have emergency response that is quickly and competently provided. Both entities, I heard both presentations, seem qualified, and I have to consider the cost, which is most different, difficult. We are small, less than two miles square, unlike the colleagues just north of us that have both a borough and a large township with greater resources. We know the value of our mill is much less, and the donation of two mills is only approximately $120,000. So, a provider that can cover and work that cost certainly is something I hope you need to consider. We are not without unlimited resources. We've heard that due to regulation, other factors, ambulance squads all over are facing issues. And who know that a community provider now may not face those same issues, and we could be back here for any number of reasons in a couple of years, which I'm sure we would like to avoid. I know we like to support local entities whenever possible, but the primary purpose to be cited here is not to support and help a local emergency services provider, but really to select emergency service provider that can best serve our needs. Thank you for your thoughtful deliberation to assure that emergency ambulance service will continue in our borough.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close public comment this time. I'll ask the manager, would you like to speak now, or you want to do borough official comments to comment on anything?
I can clarify the issue with 9F.
Did you sign up on them?
No, I think in time.
Do you want me to finish?
Three minutes. I'm in.
Bill Minder, 423 Crown Street. I'd like to know whether this is correct, that gasoline is going to be 23 cents a gallon and diesel fuel 26 cents a gallon? Is that a misprint? Because if it's not, I'd like to get my name on that list.
Well, if we could all join that consortium, we'd be good.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Did he state his name and address for the record?
Yes, he did.
Okay, good.
You got it right, correct? All right, thank you. All right, now, now for close public comment. Scott, would you like to speak?
Yes, just to clarify the question that was raised on Agenda Item 9F. That is merely the execution of a contract for a grant through the county of Bucks that was previously announced. It was for $230,000 for sidewalk and ADA curb cut improvements around the former MR Ryder School site and the area of Summer Seat.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Unless council has a problem, I will put both of them up at the same time, everyone had a chance to review them. Council's okay with that, then we would approve the minutes for June 18th, 2018, and July 10th, 2018. I'll call for a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Mike Jaeger moved it.
Just a quick question, I guess we did pull the July 16th, and they're being redone?
Yes. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, next is Finance. There's no separate treasures report, so we will go call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills.
So moved. Second.
Okay, move by Mr. Bowers and second by Mr. Jaeger.
I have a question.
Sure.
For Mr. Subey on GL 1807, 328, unemployment for $12,000, is that something that we're required to do? Is it mandatory?
Do you want to speak on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Three letters, yes.
Thank you. My second question. JCI on GL 1808, Page 2, camera repair, $628. Is there a reason that they were doing it and not someone else? Are they required to do that? I thought only under the contract we were required to have them work, do the work.
You thought what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end.
Under their contract, the electrical systems that they put in, they were the, that was the only thing that we were mandated to have them work on.
Well, it is, but it's their system, they installed it.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, granted, it was done through a subcontractor, not through JCI, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's.
Any other questions or comments on the bills?
I have one. It is Page 3, GL 1807, Rudolph Clark LLC, another bill for $70.
Yes, any bill that you see from, I would say, May, except for that last one, is, has nothing to do with civil service. That is either an internal borough question, or that is a right-to-know.
So, we're having the attorney for the civil service review right-to-know requests for civil service for questions?
Well, we.
Is that part of civil service? Yes.
If I may.
Sure.
Madam President, we kind of had to because the right-to-know request pertained to information the administration was not privy to, or did not have the ability to answer. So, it was most appropriate to come from the solicitor for the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you very much.
That's right, and those cost a lot of money.
Any other questions or comments on the bills?
I have a question. I noticed we have a bill in here for janitorial management. It seems like it's split across the MMA, the police department, and the borough. I was wondering if you could elaborate on that, Scott?
That is our new janitorial company. The cost is being split between the borough, the MMA, the police department, and the library. They're doing Borough Hall and the library on a weekly basis. This was previously okayed by council.
Okay, what's our yearly cost on that?
It's going to be about $15,000 per year.
And what were we previously paying?
Well, previously, you didn't have an outside contractor, you had an in-house employee. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
The cost of your in-house employee salary alone was, I believe, $50,000, and that wouldn't have included fringes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
All he did was clean.
Okay, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Yes.
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 Motion passes eight-zero. Next is the reports. 8A is the mayor's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam President. This evening, I'd like to read a proclamation. It is in recognition of September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and to support Turn the Town's teal awareness campaign. Whereas ovarian cancer is called the silent disease because its symptoms are often vague, and whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of cancer deaths among women, each year more than 22,000 women are diagnosed with the disease and approximately 16,000 die from it. Whereas if detected in its early stages, the survival rate from ovarian cancer is 90 to 95%, yet five-year survey rate of this disease is only 28% because it's so difficult to detect early. Whereas raising awareness of this terrible disease is the goal of the TLT Foundation, and whereas Marshall Borough will participate in the Turn the Towns teal campaign with teal ribbons placed on the downtown trees and structures, whereas Marshall Borough encourages all businesses and residents to participate and showcase teal ribbons. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that on the 20th day of August 2018, the Borough of Marshville declares September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and supports Turn the Towns teal awareness campaign. And I'd like to add to that, if anyone would like to pick up a free teal bow, they'll be available again this year at Borough Hall and at the Marshville Labor Day Picnic on September 3rd. And I'd like to thank the kind folks at the Marshville Senior Center and my wife who have taken the time to make hundreds of teal bows for Marshville. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have a junior council report.
Madam President, while we're on reports, if I may?
Sure.
So, I actually want to address something that was in our packet from Keystone. We do get our code enforcement zoning, fire marshal reports through them. I wanted to point out that, and I've been watching the costs of this all along, we've actually had a pretty good month in July. There is a laundry list of items that they're working on. I am going to ask a question about one of them in a second, but I do want to point out that Keystone's fees were covered at 111% of what they cost us in July. And that's with having somebody available about 60 hours a week. So, we're getting, at this point, a very, a very good outcome from a very professional company, and I'm happy to see that. But I do have a question for the manager. Any update on the Stockham Building that you can provide us? Your favorite, your favorite birdhouse?
The biggest birdhouse on Bucks County. Has been the bane of my existence for eight months, but every week, I get an update on the Stockham Building. Progress has been slow-going at best, and that's not my favorite speed, you know that. There's been developers stepping in and out, changing hands. I think the lender who has taken possession of the property at this point, or at least a significant portion of the property, is probably better suited and better capitalized to move this thing to fruition than his predecessors. So, I'm hoping cautiously optimistic that we'll see something happening there in short order.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, now, we'll move on to the, I'm sorry, my voice, the action items. 9A is a call for motion to approve declaring September 2018 as ovarian cancer awareness month, along with support of hanging ribbons on trees around Marshall Borough and the Turn the Town Teals Awareness Program. Have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. 9B, call for motion to appoint Jeff Delwark to the Vacant Property Review Committee to replace Bob White as Bucks County Redevelopment Authority Representative. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion?
Just so we'll miss Bob.
Yes, yes, Bob White has retired, and we wish him well. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. 9C, call for the motion to approve the 2018-2019 gasoline and diesel annual bid contract through the Bucks County Consortium. Unlettered, I'll read them all, I guess, unlettered, regular gasoline is Papco Incorporated at 23 cents per gallon, delivery charge, market fluctuation pricing. On-road ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel, Papco Incorporated, at 26 cents per gallon, delivery charge, market fluctuating pricing. Off-road diesel fuel, number two di-diesel, suburban propane incorporated, at 18 cents per gallon, delivery charge, market fluctuating pricing. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion?
Just have a comment. Mr. Mitchell, could you address Mr. Minder's question about the pricing?
The pricing is for the delivery charge, and we're charge-market fluctuation price at time of delivery, and then we bill our various in-house users accordingly. So, whether it's the police department, the municipal authority, the rescue squad, the fire company.
So, they're paying roughly 280 or whatever we're paying.
Yep.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. A roll call on it?
Council Bowers?
Yes.
Council Driesbach?
Yes.
Council Bronicle?
Yes.
Council Myers?
Yes.
Council Day? Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
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 Motion passes eight-zero.
And just keep in mind, if I may, Madam President, this is one of the main reasons for belonging to the consortium. for belonging to the consortium. The other is asphalt and road salt. I mean, that's our main reasons for participating with the consortium, to get better quantity pricing.
Better pricing. Okay, nine D, call for motion to reject the bids for the Plaza Boulevard paving project per the recommendation of the Borough Engineer. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Everyone's went through this at the agenda meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Nine E, call for motion to revise and make adjustments to the scope of proposed improvements for the Plaza Boulevard paving project to include a section of DeLaro Drive and to rebid the project.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion?
I just have one comment. That is DeLaro Drive from West Tretton to Rutland, for anyone who's interested.
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Nine F, call for motion to execute the subrecipient agreement between the County of Bucks and the Borough of Marshville, Project B 1806. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Everyone understands what that is, right, for MR writer area? Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilon Dowers?
Yes.
Councilon Delark?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilon Laris?
Yes.
Councilon Day?
Yes.
Councilon Parker?
Yes.
Councilon Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Nine G, if I could, with the council, I would like to amend the motion just to add the wording of Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat instead of just Historic Summer Seat, because that is what is in the resolution for that grant, the grant writing. So I think it's proper to put that in there. So is everyone okay with that? Do I need to place a motion to make? Okay. Okay, so I'll read that into the motion. Okay, and then we'll approve it? Okay. Nine G is a call for motion to approve the resolution authorizing the application for the multimodal transportation fund grant for Patriots Park at Historic Summer Seat accessibility improvements. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilon Dowers?
Yes.
Councilon Delark?
Yes.
Councilon Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilon Ness?
Yes.
Councilon Day?
Yes.
Councilon Parker?
Yes.
Councilon Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Motion nine H, call for motion to approve the estimate from Quality Services Plus Incorporated for the sign at Patriots Park in the amount of $1,050 as per requirement of the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have Eileen, Eileen motion, and Mr. Yeager, second. Questions or comments on that?
Just to.
Comment?
To point out that the sales tax has been removed from the price.
The amount changed.
I know a lot of people were concerned about if we would pay sales tax by accident.
Okay.
And Mr. Mitchell, can you tell us how much that was? I remember seeing it, but I don't want to quote it without, and be wrong.
I think it was like 40 or 45 dollars.
Forty-five and change.
Okay, so it came in under $1,000 approximately.
No, no, this is the price without the sales tax.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a roll call on this, please?
Councilon Dowers?
Yes.
Councilon Delark?
Yes.
Councilon Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilon Laris?
Yes.
Councilon Day?
Yes.
Councilon Parker?
Yes.
Councilon Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Motion nine I, call for motion to approve the annual Winterfest Parade using the previously approved parade route. The Winterfest Parade is to be held on Saturday, December 1, 2018, and to be sponsored by Hot Rides LLC of Marshville. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Nine J, call for motion to approval, for approval of special event road closure of a portion of the 200 block of Stockham Avenue, 205 through 227 addresses for Holy Trinity School's second annual food truck frenzy, to be held from 4:30 to 9:30 p.m. on Friday, September 7, subject to applicant providing certificate of insurance to Marshville Borough. Can I have a motion, please?
If I may, Madam President, just to let you know, Monsignor Eckert brought us the certificate of assurance today.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you very much. And can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Eileen moved it, and Ms. Chronicle seconded it. Any questions or comments on this?
I just have one comment. This was open to the public, correct?
I believe so, yeah. They said last week.
So anyone from the public's welcome to attend.
Yes, yes.
Also, if I may.
Sure.
Chief McClay informed me that he would have to close the entire block. I just wanted to make sure council was aware of that.
Okay, it's probably safer that way, similar to what a big block party would be.
I just didn't want any misunderstandings that it's not going to be a little section in the middle.
Okay, okay, I got it. All right, thank you. Okay, all in favor of this?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Motion nine K, call for motion to approve rebid of Williamson Park Playground Improvements, contract 1806074.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this? I think everyone realized that we had to rebid this. We got no bids at all. So we have put this back out for rebid for the totlot equipment.
Are we rebidding this in accordance with the engineer's recommendation to not have the responsible contractor?
No.
No?
You cannot waive the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilon Dowers?
Yes.
Councilon Delark?
Yes.
Councilon Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilon, Councilon Laris?
Yes.
Councilon Day?
Yes.
Councilon Parker?
Yes.
Councilon Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Motion nine L, call for motion to select new EMS provider for Marshville Borough and authorizing the administration to negotiate service agreement and lease terms with said provider to be effective as soon as practicable. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That is important.
Can I, I'm sorry, we, I'm sorry, let me do this again. We had to get a nomination. I'm sorry. Nine L, call for motion to select new EMS provider for Marshville Borough and authorizing the administration to negotiate service agreement and lease terms with said provider to be effective as soon as possible. May I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Capital Health.
Capital Health? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are closed? Yeah, take a roll call.
Councilon Dowers?
Yes.
Councilon Delark?
Yes.
Councilon Chronicle?
This is for Capital Health. Sorry, right? Okay, it's a little confusing. Yes.
Councilon Laris?
Yes.
Councilon Day?
Yes.
Councilon Parker?
Yes.
Councilon Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations, Capital Health. Welcome to Marshville.
If I may, I just wanted to thank Capital Health for coming forward with this. This is actually very good news for our borough, and I'm delighted the council went this direction.
Actually, Madam President, we have Jim Boson from Capital Health with us again tonight. So I don't know how long he intends to stick around, but if anybody has any questions after the meeting, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
We're already talking about service agreement and lease terms. We had a nice conference call today.
Just real quick, though, we'd like to thank Dennis Wallace, chief of operations for Yardley Makefield Rescue Squad, and Evan Resnikoff, chief of operations for Newtown Rescue Squad, for all submitting proposals for Marshville Borough, and all their help with information, stuff to get us to this point. So we thank them for their time and efforts to help us also. Okay, do you want to announce the executive session? Okay.
After this, after this meeting, we'll have executive session to discuss a labor relation. Let me see. We'll have a recess, I'm sorry. We'll have a recess. We'll come back to discuss a grievance that was filed. Is this on?
Yes.
Can I be heard? I'm sorry. And we'll also have an executive session at that time as well on labor negotiations with the police union.
Okay. All right, so the council recess at this time. It is 7:36.
Hold it back.
Diane over here.
Diane over here.
I just saw, I just saw, you know. Actually, you better not let that happen.